Hello, Virginia, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hello. You will be the only one on the speakerphone this evening.
Okay.
You win the prize.
Yes.
And I'm just going to have you on hold until the council president read it.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Before we start the meeting, I just want to remind everybody.
It's on.
It's on. I just want to remind every—can you hear me?
Yes.
If you want to make a public comment, just please come up and sign up on the sheet before the meeting starts, and we'll take you in order in which you sign up. Hello, testing?
We're getting nothing from any at all. Yeah, that's opposite number.
Check one, check one. Testing one, two.
Okay, there we go. Hello?
Are we okay? John? John, are we okay?
Okay. As I was saying, please step up and sign up on the sign-up sheet if you want to make a public comment. We have a very weighty agenda tonight. We're going to be electing a new mayor. I welcome all of the applicants for the mayor spot who've come to speak tonight, and we have our usual wealth of business to attend to. In any case, please—I also want to make an announcement that preceding this meeting at 6:00 tonight, we had an executive session to go over some litigation matters and personnel issues that require confidentiality. So please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And before we commence a roll call of the council, I also wanted to point out that there's going to be a change in the order in which we address the agenda. Specifically, the mayoral candidates, instead of speaking near the beginning after the Winterfest presentation, are moving that down until after the presentation of the committee reports. That way, the mayoral candidates will be able to speak right before council votes on them, so it'll be fresh in our minds. Some of our memories are not what they used to be, so I wanted to put those next to each other time-wise. In any case, I'll ask now for Virginia to do a roll call.
Yes, thank you. Catherine Price Engelhardt.
Present.
Ellen Halaho.
Here.
Andrew Lupin.
Here.
Jason Minett.
Here.
Aritha Murray.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Scott Robinson.
Here.
Auntie Sherlock.
Here.
Our borough solicitor.
Scott Holbert on behalf of Flagren Associates.
And our borough manager.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to start the meeting with a presentation by Donna Wilson on Winterfest 2023.
I'm the chairperson for the Winterfest parade. I'm sure you all know, it's been posted all over. The Winterfest parade is Saturday, December 2nd, and the parade will start at 10:00. We line up at 9:00 down on Ohio Avenue and West Coast Road at the church parking lot. There are still slots open if everybody's interested as an organization that wants to be in the parade. We have gotten quite a bit of response. There's a lot of cars coming in, a lot of hot rods and things coming in, and Jeeps. And of course, Santa will be there, and we hope council will join us and march in the parade with us. Last year, because the parade got canceled, we decided this year that we were going to stay with our same court, because they didn't get a chance to ride through town and do their waving and throwing of candies. And also, we decided that we would keep the same court. But this year, I did things just a little bit different. You all heard what their parents and the people who nominated them had to say last year, so this year, we decided to do something just a little different. So Aubrey, can you come up, please? This is Aubrey Lynn Wilson, and this year, I've decided I want you guys to get to know the court, so we've decided to ask them some questions. So Aubrey, where do you go to school and what grade are you in?
I go to Marsville. I go to Marsville Intermediate High School, and I'm in fifth grade.
And what's your favorite subject?
Science.
Why?
Doing all of the experiments is always a fun.
Could you move the mic down?
Doing all of the experiments is always a fun time.
Do you know—calm down, you're okay. Don't be nervous. I get nervous when I come up here too, so it's good. You're in what grade again?
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade, so you've got a long ways to go. Do you know what you want to be when you graduate?
A veterinarian or a doctor.
So lots of college in your life coming up. You ready for that?
Yes.
What's your after-school activities?
I do breeding Olympics on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and I want to either do soccer or chorus when I'm in middle school.
Okay. What's your hobbies?
Singing. I like to hang out with my three cats, and that's pretty much it.
If you could go on vacation, anywhere, where would you go and why?
To the Bahamas or Hawaii. I just think they're such tropical islands, and being surrounded by the ocean, I think would just be perfect for a vacation.
What's your favorite part of Christmas?
Being with my family.
Okay. And what has been your favorite gift so far when it comes to Christmas?
I would have to say my three-story Rainbow Heart dollhouse.
Nice. They got new room sessions this year, so put your arm through here. This one. Go back and sit down until we're done, and then everybody— Next, we have Olivia. This is Olivia Muckin. She's going to tell us where she goes to school and what grade she's in.
I go to Marsville Middle School and High School, and I am in seventh grade.
Okay. And what's your favorite subject?
My favorite subject is math, because every single day, we do notes to keep us occupied.
Okay.
Excuse me, it's very hard to hear her. She's so soft-spoken.
Talk in there.
Pull it out and let her hold it.
That microphone is nobody's friend, I understand.
Okay, well, how does it come out of there? There you go.
Thank you.
Okay. Liv, what do you want to be when you graduate from high school?
I either want to work with animals or be a hairdresser.
Heads up to hair. What's your after-school activities?
I do National Honor Society gymnastics, band, and bowling, and some D&amp;D after school.
D&amp;D. Olivia's a pretty good drummer. Mount Seir at the Thanksgiving games. What are your—what are your hobbies?
I like riding my bikes and playing with my friends.
And if you could go anywhere on vacation, where would you want to go? Why?
I would go to Yellowstone National Park, because I would love to see the amazing duckgeysers.
Nice. And what's your favorite part of Christmas?
My favorite part of Christmas is being with my family.
That's a big family, isn't it? And what has been your favorite gift so far?
My favorite gift is a science thing that I get almost every single month. It's called Crunchlapse.
Ah, so you just get to do a lot of science then, huh?
Yeah.
Projects.
Yeah.
This is junior Miss Winterfest, Olivia Muckin. Thank you for your certificate. Next is Olivia's sister, Mackenzie. I think we know, but where do you go to—no, maybe they don't know. I know. Where do you go to school?
I go to Bucks County Technical High School.
And what is your major there?
I'm in the dental health shop.
What's your favorite subject?
My favorite subject is math. I like working with the numbers and problem-solving.
And what—I know what your plans are, but you tell us, what's your plan for after graduation?
Going to college to become a dental hygienist.
And your favorite after-school activities are?
I do band, Dungeons and Dragons, and bowling on the weekends.
Mackenzie has put together—the drum line in the band has grown immensely in the past couple of years, and Mackenzie surprised me the last game I was at, because she had her drum line play a drum line solo that was pretty awesome. The whole stand was just loving it and rocking with her, so it was really good. What's your hobbies?
I like crocheting and playing the drums.
And if you could go anywhere for vacation, where would it be and why?
I would go to Italy for the scenery and the coffee.
People were going to be upset saying she's young and likes coffee, but we're okay with that. What's your favorite part of Christmas?
I like decorating.
Do you?
Yeah.
Have you decorated yet?
I've decorated my room.
Wow, nice. And in all your years, what's been your favorite gift?
The drum set my parents caught me.
So this is Mackenzie, and she is our Miss Winterfest.
Donna, if I could say one thing to Mackenzie, I was at the game, and the score was a little lopsided, to say the least, but the band, all the way up until the end, they were totally into it. If you didn't look at the scoreboard, if you listened to the band, you would have thought it was a tie score, so you guys did really good.
So we need them to come out on Thanksgiving, right? Support the Bulldogs, support the band? Okay, you're welcome, honey. And last, last we have Hunter.
Oh, he just answered the question.
I'm going to ask you.
Oh, you're going to ask me.
Ready?
Yep, I'm ready.
Okay. Where do you go to school and what grade are you in?
So I go to Holy Trinity School. It's a Catholic school here in Morrison, and I'm in seventh grade.
And what's your favorite subject?
My favorite subject is actually social studies and history. I enjoy it, because I love learning about geography and things about countries and stuff like that.
Perfect. And what do you want to be when you graduate?
After I graduate, I have a few ideas, like a famous actor, or a professional athlete, or maybe work in construction.
There's just some different things, huh?
Yeah.
What sport do you like?
What sport? I'm a big fan. I play basketball. I'm on the team for my school. I also do bowling, and mainly just those two.
Okay. And what are your after-school activities besides what you just mentioned?
My after-school activities? I'm on the football club. I also was in the chess club, and the cricket club, where they like designed shirts with a cricket machine, if you know what that is, you know where your ribbons came from.
Oh, makes sense. And kind of your activities and hobbies, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Did somebody tell me that you've been on—you've done some acting?
Yep. I'm an actor. I've been in some movies, TV shows, and I mean, yeah, a lot of them. I met some celebrities like Tom Holland and Anne Hathaway, and that was pretty cool.
Nice, nice. If you could go anywhere for vacation, where would you want to go and why?
I have a few options, but mainly Italy, because I love—like, the beaches look amazing, the food, and I'm Italian myself, so I want to go there. Yeah.
What's your favorite part of Christmas?
Favorite part of Christmas is definitely spending time with my family, especially my cousins and just all the family together.
Have a good time?
Yep, have a good time.
And what's been your favorite gift ever so far?
My favorite gift ever had to be my cat named Carson. I love him so much. It's amazing.
Very nice.
Yep, that's it.
So this is our Mr. Winterfest. So if you guys could come out, if you can't, you make the parade, if you can't be in the parade, or you don't have an organization, then come out, stand on the curb, grab some candy, support our kids, support all the people that are in the parade. It grows yearly, it grows and grows, and I've been doing it for quite a while now. I enjoy it, and we just want to bring the holidays to Marsville and, you know, celebrate our camp. Go ahead and— Pictures? Can we get pictures?
Sure.
Why don't you guys come on out? Council? Would you like the picture with them?
Sure.
Just come down. You guys move up a little, let council behind you. You've got to be able to see them. Dance forever with council. I want you to be safe. And I— We've got to see one of the people. There you go. Okay. I'm going to go with that. Council? Would you like the picture with them?
Sure.
Just come down. You guys move up a little, let council behind you. You've got to be able to see them. Dance forever with council. I want you to be safe. And I— We've got to see one of the people. There you go. Okay, everybody, you're going to have to prop it though, okay? Say, "Happy Winterfest."
Happy Winterfest.
Thank you.
No, it's all you guys. Just rolling pictures.
Okay, thank you all.
We're going to move on to public comment. First and only person signing up is Israel Velez.
You have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Hello, everyone. I'm Israel Velez, 622 Barkley.
Pull the microphone out of the thing and hold it real close.
All right, forgive me. Give me one second here. I wrote down certain things. Well, I'm here because I'm a renter, retired from human services in Jersey, and I came down to retire back in my hometown. It's my hometown and doesn't love Marshall. But what we're here, we ran into, I guess, discrepancy, if you will, with the place that we are renting, which has led us to become, you know, disheartened by the fact that we now have to leave due to a certain document that was falsified, which got us into the place we're renting, which leads us to our current situation now, which is having to seek within 10 days a new place to live. You know, it goes in a lot deeper than that. We don't have enough time to get it, but we would like our situation to be looked into further due to the nature of the document that we have. We believe it was falsified, UNO, which got us into the place that created this whole situation for us. So we would like to have that further investigated. That's pretty much it. You know, we're not doing too well. You know, the wife is sick, and this situation is just—it's just like exacerbating her condition, and we'd like it to be looked into. We feel it has merit, and we think it would help out a lot of other renters who are possibly dealing with this same situation. We feel that we're not alone in this, and we would like for it to be looked into further. Thank you.
Yeah. I would just say, in addition to your public comment, you probably want to put that in writing and submit it to the borough manager for some kind of follow-up.
Excuse me. May I ask you to come up to the desk? I'd like to give you my card with my contact information.
Anyway, that completes our public comment section for this evening. Moving on to approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the October 17th and October 25th meetings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to finance. I'm sorry. No, I did them together. We approved both of them, unless anyone has an objection. Okay. Very good. Moving on to finance, can I get a motion for approval of the bill list and to pay the bills?
I'm in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose.
Okay. That's one. Any other opposed? Okay.
May I make a comment?
Go ahead.
The total bills for this month, for public's knowledge, $492,751. A lot of that was the tow path project that you see here. It includes some of the money for the sewer, the roof architect, and the electric panel, which is all the improvements that we're doing that are all positive. Thank you.
Thank you. In any event, the motion to approve the bill list carried seven to one, I believe?
Yep.
Okay.
Virginia?
Yes.
I know it's done as a voice vote, Virginia. I just want to make sure that you got that okay.
I did, yes. Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on then to reports. First, the mayor's report. I can report that as the acting mayor, I have no report tonight. We've got a lot going on, and most of my time has been spent getting things ready for the next mayor, which we'll get to with the next item of business. And that leads us to the police chief's report. We don't have a police chief currently, but we have Corporal Bill Smith, who is the officer in charge of the department right now, and I've asked him to come to give us a status report on the police department. Thank you, Corporal Smith.
Good evening. Yesterday, I submitted the monthly reports to the manager for distribution to the council members. The numbers are fairly consistent with the previous months. We've had really no difference in crime. Halloween night was a success. There were a few disturbances during the trick-or-treat hours. We had additional three officers and marked police vehicles and a police chief on a bike. I believe that one of the keys to reducing the problems during Halloween night was the fact that years ago, we instituted the trick-or-treat curfew, which dressed or reduced the number of people being outside after 8, 9 o'clock at night. Moving on to motor-car enforcement. Officer Hollis has 10 more mentored inspections that he is currently doing with the sergeant in Falls Township. The inspections should be completed by the second week of December. Once he is certified, I will assign him to inspection details when manpower allows, but I can assure you that the program will be successful. As the holidays approach, I'd like to remind everyone to lock their cars, especially if you're leaving items in there after shopping. If there's any suspicious activity, I urge everyone to call the police immediately. It's important that these things are reported to us as they are occurring. It's easier to apprehend someone when they're actually committing the crime versus when we're trying to review video to identify them. The last note that I have is that the police department is stable. It's running efficiently. Even after the departure of the chief of police, my philosophy at this point is to continue operating business on the business-as-usual philosophy. All the officers who are scheduled and working have continued to do their jobs with no issues. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Corporal Smith. Any questions from the council?
I do. So Officer Hollis will be doing trucks—I get it when time permits, but he will be fully certified the second week in December.
I'm hoping at the latest. I have had contact with Sergeant Clean in Falls Township. He is his mentor, and he has assured me that we will—
The numbers are fairly consistent with the previous months, we've had really no difference in crime. Halloween night was a success, there were a few disturbances during the trick or treat hours. We had additional three officers in marked police vehicles and the police chief on a bike. I believe that one of the keys to reducing the problems during Halloween night was the fact that years ago, we instituted the trick or treat curfew, which dressed or reduced the number of people being outside after eight, nine o'clock at night. Moving on to motor carrier enforcement. Officer Hollis has 10 more mentored inspections that he is currently doing with the sergeant in Falls Township. The inspection should be completed by the second week of December. Once he is certified, I will assign him to inspection details when manpower allows, but I can assure you that the program will be successful. As the holidays approach, I'd like to remind everyone to lock their cars, especially if you're leaving items in there after shopping. If there's any suspicious activity, I urge everyone to call the police immediately. It's important that these things are reported to us as they are occurring. It's easier to apprehend someone when they're actually committing the crime versus when we're trying to review video to identify them. The last note that I have is, is that the police department is stable, it's running efficiently. Even after the departure of the chief of police, my philosophy at this point is to continue operating business on the business as usual philosophy. All the officers who are scheduled and working have continued to do their jobs with no issues. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Corporal Smith. Any questions from the council?
I do. So Officer Hollis will be doing trucks this, like, I get it when time permits, but he will be fully certified the second week in December?
I'm hoping at the latest. I have had contact with Sergeant Clean in Falls Township, he is his mentor, and he has assured me that we will be done in the middle of December.
Okay, is there, because we're in the middle of doing budgets, is there anything that Officer Hollis needs in order to do the trucks that we currently do not have?
As far as I'm aware, I had went over that list with Officer Hollis, and he assured me everything that was on that list was acceptable. I then took that to Chief McClay. He approved that, and then the purchases were made. So at this point, I am aware that everything that we need is done. The only question that we're gonna have going forward is what vehicle we're gonna put him in, because that does take a lot of equipment for him to do his job properly.
Are we going to need a better vehicle for him? Like, we used to have the van, but now are we going to need a bigger SUV, or are the SUVs good?
I believe a larger SUV would be good, because there's gonna be a gear mounting system that's gonna go in the back, that's gonna be specifically for motor carrier. But the plan overall is, is that this vehicle should be equipped for patrol as well. So he can very easily transition from a motor carrier detail and assume patrol position, and we'll be able to take prisoners into custody, do transport. So the vehicle will have additional things in it, but nothing less.
Okay, that's good to hear. All right, and I also have, you mentioned that there were a lot of additional officers on patrol. I'm, you know, down in the manor, and I didn't see one officer from like four o'clock till when I left, when, you know, I closed up at 8:30. I don't know who was supposed to patrol the first ward, but there were, I did not see any officers. And I stand at the end of my street with my neighbors, I'm not in the house, you know, waiting for kids to knock on the doors.
Sure. Just to answer that, from what I know, I was given a Halloween detail report from the chief. We were in compliance with that detailed order. I know that we did have some problems that were consolidated up near Palmer, Stockham, Harding, right in that particular area. So once a few of those disturbances were dispatched, we kind of flooded that area, because there was a lot of people there, and dispersed them appropriately. I mean, I apologize if-
No, that's okay, as long as there was a reason and not just that the first ward was overlooked.
No, the chief did give me the directive, the new order, and it was complied with 100%.
Okay, that's fine. One last thing, I was reading on the Town Watch page that there were some cars that were broken into and the steering column was ruined, I guess with them trying to steal the auto. One was on Hendrickson, one was on Osborne, one was on Washington. Is there anything that the homeowners can do or should be doing, or do we know was the break-ins like at three in the morning, or late at night, or there's absolutely nothing, because it's just random?
It's random. Usually, this type of activity is confined to nighttime. Unfortunately, today's advances in technology have not deterred the criminals from doing what they're doing. Ring cameras, we have some crime cameras mounted on poles here. Extra lighting. These guys unfortunately walk up, they do what they do, and they're out of there within minutes, if not seconds. So the odds of a patrol car passing right at that moment are very slim. But I believe that the only thing we can do is be due diligence when you're up. If you look out the window, you see something call. No police calls, a waste of time.
Great, thank you. Nice report.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Corporal Smith. Managers' report.
Thank you, Council President Paul. Good evening, everyone, it's very nice to see the room filled with people. On my managers' list this evening is, we do have the Bridge Street projects that, which we've talked about for a long time. We're coming to a final closing of that project in December. Originally, the final inspection was scheduled for December 4th. We're still waiting for some railings, so that may move till December 14th. They'll certainly inform council and everyone as soon as we hear that. But it's due to the railing delay. But we're happy to see the progress that has been made. Anybody that goes in that area, you can see really what the full potential of the trail will be leading to that area. The other item that I wanted to discuss, I had on my last managers' report some misinformation about the, excuse me, the cloverleaf product, so, property. So please accept this as a clarification of misinformation that I was provided. The RDA and the cloverleaf property, the RDA has not started on the implementation of the cleanup plan date. The RDA is working through the permitting currently. And also, Bob White has no role with the RDA, I believe he may be a consultant for the redeveloper. I just wanted to let everybody know that that was a misstatement that was on my report, because I was provided with incorrect information. We did have a kickoff meeting last week with Snyder and Hoffman Associates regarding the electrical panel work that's going to be taking place. We're very excited about that. The roof is about 90% complete at this time. Thanks to John Later, he noticed there was an issue with the flashing, and I contacted the contractor, and we're getting that fixed as soon as possible. The other item that we have is we have been working on a policy and ordinance committee, we've been working on reviewing noise ordinance and alarm ordinance. So if anyone that sees that information on our website, you're interested in coming to the meetings, please do so. The blight procedures that took place at 327 Prospect Avenue, there's been some questions as to what's going on with the property. At this time, the property is sold, and the developer is correcting all of the issues at the property and going to clean the property up and, of course, resell that property. And that's all I have at this time, Council President.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. So the tow path on Bridge Street, I noticed that normally when you have the ADA curb, that it's normally in the middle of the sidewalk, and I noticed that on Bridge Street, it's actually coming into Bridge Street, and they have painted white lines that will now take away from the car traffic. My concern on that is, who is responsible, should like the snowplows ruin that ADA curb?
It would be our responsibility.
And do we know why they put it into the middle of the street?
I do not know why. I know that you're the, several people have actually brought this up to my attention, and when I arrived at the borough, the plan was already in place and voted on in prior times. So I can't answer that question, I don't know.
Any other questions for the borough manager? Thank you. Committee reports.
Okay, just a report on the Parks and Recreation Committee, which because of, we didn't know if we'd have to schedule this month for a budget meeting, there won't be a November meeting. So, and that's why that. So we just, the last meeting, we did a recap of what we've done this past year. And between cleanups and tree planting and cleaning up the benches and painting the tables and benches, painting the pull shack house, we kind of felt like we'd really done quite a bit, plus the preserve. So I'm very proud of that. Last weekend, we planted eight trees. Just to be clear, the money was donated anonymously. So nothing came out of the borough coffers. We had nearly 30 volunteers come out last Saturday. And it was very well organized, thank you Gary and Debbie and the rest of you. You did a really nice job, I was part of it. I think mostly I just picked up rocks, but and then Jason would give me more rocks.
To be fair, they were pretty cool rocks.
They were pretty good. And it was very well organized, a fun day, there's some people in the audience that participated, and thank you so much. It looks really nice, I can see that, those trees in a couple of years, it's just gonna be beautiful. It's gonna be stunning, so thank you. We also talked about the Girl Scouts and their bench program. And so the council accepted that, and so we're gonna be Savior plastic grocery bags, because we're gonna make them into benches. There's more to it than that, but Savior shopping bag plastic. And do we know where the location to take those to? We have a place at Twisted Root, you can take them. And then they get mushed and put together and make benches. So-
Can you tell the location of where Twisted Root is for anybody?
It's on Bridge Street, thank you Helen, on Bridge Street. Down from Bitchin' Kitten. So we did the cutting of the cherry tree with George Washington. So that was great. And we also had Bucks County TMA, which I see we're gonna approve being a membership of. And looking at, they've already located a place, and we've kind of set a date for next spring, I'll take it to council and have it voted on. But to do a pop-up bike bike trail. This is going all over the state of Pennsylvania, they're temporary, we do it for four days. And it's, you know, they do all the work, and it costs us nothing. But we also do a lot of safety education and stuff that day with kids and people and and everyone involved, so thank you so much. And that's it.
Thank you. Andrew?
Yes. The finance committee, we've, this is budget season, as many of us know. We've had quite a few of you of our residents attending our meetings. Our next meeting is gonna be Wednesday night, 7:00 PM here. So here is the budget in a nutshell. We are now a $6.2 million borough. I believe the highest budget the borough has ever had. We are solvent, so things have changed. Between ARPA money and the EIT, we are using the money carefully, conservatively. We have, we're putting money in a reserve fund, because one, for example, the tax revenues between November, December, and May, June, they're very slow, but this is how we pay bills. The tax money comes in, then the funds, then the funds, that fund gets reimbursed, gets repaid. We have money for the major infrastructure problems, so we've had a borough hall between the ARPA money and some EIT. The roof is being fixed. Sewage pipes downstairs and outside have been fixed. Electrical box has been repaired, Judith, or in the process of?
In the process of.
In the process of. The gas boy has been revealed, we have a new gas boy in? Any major projects I'm missing? Is that about it?
I believe you covered them all.
Okay. Many small projects are being addressed. All the committees and all the things that were cut last year are being restored to last year's levels, or as close as possible. It's gonna be conservative budget, we're gonna keep it that way. But again, the next meeting is Wednesday night, 7:00 PM here, you're all welcome to attend.
Andrew, if I may, plumbing at the Borough Hall that is deficient, emergency plumbing, it's on the agenda, and also a new heating and air conditioning system at the Ambulance Corporation building.
Oh yes, and one other important thing, we have money for roads, for road repair. Not miles and miles of roads tomorrow, I know. We should almost have a lottery to see whose roads will fix, we can use the proceeds to fund the third one. But that's probably, I'm sure our attorney won't let me do that, but it's a good thought. Yeah, so this is how we're using the money we've got in, and yeah, step by step and budget by budget, the town will be improved. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for Andrew? Jason?
Yes, I do have a report, sort of. I'll have a more formal report for the December meeting. But over the course of the last several months, the Community Choice Aggregation Exploratory Committee, pick small names for your committees, people. We've been tasked with validating the claims of CCA for PA to see if that is right for this borough to join in with Community Choice Aggregation. A brief thing is basically like, much like a union, collective bargaining can lead to more specific outcomes. Their claims, where that savings, cost savings to the average consumer are possible. And again, I will have a more comprehensive formal report for the December meeting, but overall, I'm feeling very positive that we were able to validate a lot of the claims that CCA for PA made. And I'm looking forward to more clearly expressing that. I apologize that that is currently what I have.
Thanks.
Yep.
So I, so Judith, mine is actually a request, the MBA, and it actually goes out to all residents as well, the MBA will be putting up the Christmas decorations up at the plaza. Jane, right after Thanksgiving? So it's- Yes, so-
MBA is the Morrisville Business Association?
Yeah, and they have been tasked with decorating the Robert Morris Plaza, so November 27th through 29th is when the anticipation is. Last year, Jane and I, we spent a lot of time and we got a lot of free ornaments, and we have a 12-foot free Christmas tree that we got. And so then, Judith, is there a way that Public Works could help put down that 12-foot tree, so that it, last year, it kind of got blown in the wind, and we need a little bit of help?
Yes, I had spoken with Jane and John Later, and and we're already engaged in making sure that happens.
Okay, great, so we actually got a lot of donations from some businesses. Big Lots gave us a blow-up snowman. Home Depot was very generous, for only $20, we have a Santa Claus in the motorcycle. So I'm looking actually forward to seeing what it turns out to look like. The other thing that happened was Toll Brothers was here last month, and they were talking about putting up right outside of like Green Street, a do-not-block box. So I've been talking to Toll Brothers, and I also gave a call to the Bridge Commission in order to try to figure out how to do that without giving an expense to the borough. So in talking with the Bridge Commission, they had mentioned that they're going to start doing a study to see that whole area of where the ramps are. And they asked me some questions, you know, like, you know, what would we like to see there? So one of the things one of the officers told me is to put flashing stops instead of just a stop. So, you know, I gave them a little bit of a list of what, you know, Morrisville would like to see. But hopefully, they can rearrange that whole area so that maybe the truck, and I did ask them if they could put up, if we could put up signs on their ramp saying, "Please continue on to Route 13 for the trucks." But they didn't answer me on that, but I'm definitely gonna keep working on that. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Indirectly, yes. So if I may, speaking of December 2nd, in the Marshall Business Association, the MBA and British Cars of Bucks County, following Donna's December 2nd Winterfest event, we're doing a Toys for Tots toy collection over at Marshall Shopping Center, between 10:00 in the morning and 3:00 in the afternoon. We're looking for donations of new and unwrapped toys and books for boys and girls. We'll have a few Marines from the local Toys for, from the local Toys for Tots Reserve Group appearing. We've got some of the politicians from Doylestown, our VIPs are Bob Harvey and Diane Marsaglia. Brian Fitzpatrick has promised he's gonna show up, but what we really need is not, see, we need donations of toys. So whatever you can bring in. Judith, we're gonna put a drop box downstairs, I trust, we discussed that yesterday?
The drop box has been there for about a week, and-
Super, thank you very much. I'd like to send tied up on budgets, but not entirely. Yes, bring them on that Saturday, bring them down to Borough Hall, and you finish our event. Reverend Taylor's got a, his group has an event starting, is he here? He was here earlier. That evening sometime. Mr. Wazowski, you're involved in that, where is, you're not. Okay, we have circular events going through town that day. Donna?
Yeah.
Okay. He has something starting the afternoon after we did, and I was hoping he was gonna be here so we could talk about it. But we, everything came together, the date had changed, because we gotta get the toys collected earlier, because the Marines need to take them on, you know, take them, distribute and wrap them up, so some of the dates have been more flexible than I would have liked. But next year, we're gonna, next year we're gonna talk. Exactly. So, at this point, I'll give the meeting back to Mr. Paul.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Okay, then we're gonna move on to the main event of the evening, the presentation by the applicants for the mayor vacancy. I want to preface the introduction by saying that- I want to preface the introduction by saying that, to my knowledge, we have seven current applicants. We originally had about 10. Three have withdrawn. On the, in the agenda, we identified eight of those remaining. Rita Ledger, the former mayor, has withdrawn since then. So it's basically the seven that are left on the original agenda. That's Jackie Burgivan, George Dodig, Diane Lanahan, Sean Ratty, Benjamin Louis Strauss, Gary Wallace, and Tom Wazowski. I apologize for any mispronunciations, but I haven't actually met all of the candidates, nor have all of them RSVP'd, so I can't even guarantee that they're all here tonight. But I will call them up in alphabetical order, and if they, if they're here, please come up to the microphone. You're each given three minutes. I will enforce the time limit strictly, out of fairness to everybody. And with that, I will ask Jackie Burgivan to come forward.
Sorry, I didn't RSVP. I didn't get an email.
I'm just glad you're here. I wasn't sure about my email addresses, that's why I kept sending them and calling whenever possible, but thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. I'm not prepared to say anything. Don't know what to say, honestly.
Tell us why you want to be mayor, and you're, yeah. Tell us why you want to be mayor, and what you can do for the borough. From your heart.
From my heart, okay. So I am a nurse, and one thing with being a nurse is you care for people. And that, besides being a wife and a mother, I care about my neighborhood, my neighbors' family, whatever. And when we first moved to Morrisville about six years ago, we came from Philadelphia, and when we moved here, the second we pulled up outside the house, I'm like, this is it, this is it. Our neighbor that has since passed away, lived behind us, he is the one that really sold us on the neighborhood. His father had a big part of the development of Morrisville way back. Like, his family had a big part of it. And he just sold us on the neighborhood, and how friendly it was, how friendly everybody was, and had, it was a small community, and that's what we were looking for, and we fell in love with it. And I think that being the type of person I am, being a nurse, being, I don't even know what I'm saying, but like, being like integrity and responsibility and things like that, which go hands in hands with being a nurse, being a good person in general, would benefit Morrisville, you know? I'm a people person. I don't know what to say right now because I was caught off guard, but I'm a people person, and I genuinely care about people. And that's just me. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jackie. And my apologies if none of the notices reached you. I apologize, I did the best I could. I'm very sorry that you didn't get advanced notice, but you did a great job anyway. Thank you. George Dodig?
Ladies and gentlemen of Morrisville Borough Council, good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you today. My name is George Dodig, which, I'm sorry. Hello? Just working? We're going to try. Which, thank you very much for pronouncing my name correctly. Nobody ever pronounces.
I just guessed.
So, my name is George Dodig. I stand here before you as a proud resident and someone deeply invested in the future of our remarkable town. I am seeking your support to become the next mayor of Morrisville because I believe in the tremendous potential that lies within our community. Having called Morrisville home for only a short time, I've had the privilege of witnessing the resilience, the spirit, and the strength that defines us. I'm not a stranger to the challenges we face. I myself was born in Lehigh Valley during the Bethlehem Steel Era. I watched my town struggle and steadily revive itself through small businesses and supporting each other in the community. It's my firm belief that with the right leadership, dedication, and a collaborative approach, that we can overcome any challenges and propel Morrisville to new heights. If entrusted with the role of mayor, I'm committed to fostering the inclusive and transparent government by actively seeking the input of our residents, ensuring that their voices are not only heard, but also incorporated in decisions that shape our town's future. Community engagement is not just a campaign promise for me, it's the bedrock of my vision for Morrisville. I envision a town where local businesses thrive, where our schools are beacons of education and innovation, and where every resident feels safe and supported. By working together, we create policies that promote economic growth, enhance the quality of education, and ensure the safety and well-being of our community. I also pledge to maintain open lines of communication with each one of you, fostering collaborative relationship between the mayor's office and the Borough Council. Together, we can achieve more, and I am eager to work hand in hand with you to address the issues that matter most to our constituents. In closing, I stand before you, not just as a candidate, but as a fellow community member who is deeply invested in the prosperity of Morrisville. I am ready to bring fresh ideas, a collaborative spirit, and a dedication to service to the role of mayor. I respectfully ask for your support, and I am more than willing to engage in further discussions about my vision of Morrisville. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to the opportunity to serve the wonderful residents of Morrisville as their mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dodig. Diane Lanahan?
In case you aren't fully aware of who I am and what I can bring to the position of mayor, I wanted to share a few things about me. My name is Diane Lanahan. I've been a proud resident of Morrisville for 10 years tomorrow. I don't like to just talk about problems I encounter, I'm a doer. When I saw the state of our school district and the need for people to act, I stepped up to be a member of the Morrisville School Board. During my years as a school board director, I provided passionate advocacy for the children and taxpayers of Morrisville. I even spent some time as Morrisville mascot. I was the bulldog for the football team. Because of my role as a school director, I'm aware of the government processes which are different at the municipal level, but in some ways also the same. It requires advocating for our borough with the same state and federal government representatives with whom I'm already familiar. I would bring my hard-working and dedicated work ethic to this position. On the school board, I had the opportunity to work cooperatively with other members of the board regardless of their politics. This is also something I would bring to the office of mayor, a spirit of unity, cooperation, and respect for differing opinions. I ask the Borough Council to seriously consider and act upon my appointment to mayor of Morrisville. Thank you for your time.
Sean Ratty?
Good evening, everyone. There are many in this town who probably know who I am, or at least have heard my name. And that's because I've always tried to tie myself together when it comes to the community of Morrisville through various meetings since I came here two decades ago. I came here as a teenager to the high school because I knew that there was potential and benefits to this town and this community that didn't exist anywhere else. And I find myself returning here again and again, looking for more opportunities to improve and have an impact on this township. As a student, I worked on projects for the school to improve the student body. I sat on the school board as a rep to listen to the concerns of citizens. I actually was even part of the original program that used to shadow this very council to learn the process of government here in Morrisville, in order to build a relationship between the town leaders, the students, and citizens. As a person who works in the school district, I have a working relationship with the students of this town, the parents who have come to know me, the teachers and administrators who help with improve things for our students, and even the community groups that do projects through our school. My job at the school, I go to where I'm needed to teach, to adapt, to think critically on my feet, and to face new challenges every day, a skill that I thrive, and I very much consider that one of my best values to pride myself on, and something all leaders should at least be to some degree well-versed in. As a member of the community, I help where I can with community projects, from working on the concert for the public for Winterfest, to bringing back the book fair to the schools and working with 21st Century to encourage reading, to also being able to do the mega sports camp here in town that my wife and I run with our church community and volunteers from here, to give a free camp every summer for the kids, to have something to give back to our community. Do I know everything I need to know going into this? No. Unlike others, I have no problem admitting that I don't always have the answers up front. But I will always take the time to learn, work, research, and gather whatever information I need to get back for the best decision, not just looking to answer what people want to hear. As a researcher by training, I know the importance of listening to all sides of a dispute before rendering an impartial judgment, giving equal credence to all involved and impacted, knowing that no one side will have all the answers. That is my vow to listen to all those who call Morrisville home. As a former business manager, I know the struggles of making important and often difficult decisions, how to choose the best course of action that impacts the community as a whole and not just my own selfish needs. That is my vow to put the needs of others before myself. As an educator, I know the importance of teaching and leading others, guiding them to understand to why we do what we do, and the importance of cooperation for a singular goal. That is my vow to work towards understanding and work towards uniting rather than fracturing those on different sides of issues. The role of mayor in Morrisville may be a small one in what makes this whole town work, but I think it's an influential one. Having a mayor who's a part of many aspects of this community, who can work towards the benefit, betterment of many people, and sees a desire to grow with others and impact the town in a way that's more than a title, is the key reason why I'm here today. Thank you.
Benjamin Louis Strauss?
My name is Benjamin Strauss. That's Strauss as in Levi Strauss, the gene creator, or Strauss as in the engineer of the Golden Gate Bridge, Joseph Strauss. I've lived in this town for almost two years, but I've called this area home for all of my life. I believe in business growth, smart schools, and pedestrian travel when possible. If I was elected mayor, to be your mayor, I would focus on attracting new businesses, such as the Garden Farm Market, Bellis Sisley, Jules Tire and Automotive Repair, Ben's Morrisville Deli, yeah, Ben's Morrisville Deli, Cunningham's Hardware, The Good Taste Chinese Restaurant, Bitchin' Kitchen, Delmore Lanes, 7-Eleven, and Nick's Pizzeria. I would also focus on improving our school system by introducing a new motto. That motto is, "Smart, Strong, Safe, and Safe." Finally, I would start to think about a new construction project. One idea I had was, was a pedestrian path linking the levee path with the Morrisville Riverfront Preserve, going behind the self-storage center. So in conclusion, if I was elected mayor, I would support business growth, improve our schools, and build a new pedestrian path. So please vote for me, Benjamin Strauss, for the remainder of this term.
Thank you, Mr. Strauss. Gary Wallace?
I stand before you, my family, and our beloved community, deeply honored and with a profound desire to serve as our mayor. As the son of a United States Marine and a brother to a dedicated federal agent, my family values of discipline and public service, drawing my commitment to bringing people together in Morrisville Borough. Actively engaging with our residents through organizations like the Environmental Advisor Council, and coordinating successful community events, such as the recent tree planting in Williamson Park, has provided me with valuable insight into our community's unique needs and aspirations. While my resume may not boast the title of mayor, it does showcase 17 years of customer service leadership, equipped me with the essential skills in team management, budget optimization, and relationship building, which are crucial qualities for guiding our community forward. Serving as a multi-regional director, I navigate complexities of collaborating with various departments within our organization. Despite occasional challenges, I work tirelessly each day to mend and strengthen those partnerships, recognizing that working together brings a stronger, better unity and a stronger collective experience. I believe in fostering an environment where diverse perspectives are celebrated, irrespective of differences. I am committed to ensuring every resident feels valued, included, and heard in the shared journey of making Morrisville a better place. My leadership skills will extend beyond the traditional executive roles, encompassing the vital responsibility of leading our police force, a cornerstone in our community's safety and well-being. I am committed to equipping, supporting, and assisting the training of Morrisville Police Department to meet the evolving needs of our community. Sitting down with our new chief, discussing the department's needs, and planning how to move forward are integral parts of this commitment. I believe in community-oriented policing, where officers actively engage with residents to build trust and foster collaboration within the community. I'll work tirelessly to implement innovative strategies that enhance the public safety while respecting the rights and dignity of every individual. By creating an environment where the police force and the community work hand in hand, we can address shared concerns, prevent crime, and create a safer, more-together Morrisville. Challenges will arise, but as mayor, I am here to stay and navigate through those tough times. My vision is unite our residents, foster a sense of belonging, and promote greater community involvement. I aim to harness the collective wisdom of our community in addressing challenges and making Morrisville Borough the best it can be for all residents. I firmly believe that strong community engagement is the key to success for small towns and boroughs. Fostering a sense of belonging and celebrating our community will enhance our quality of life, attract new visitors, and entice new businesses to call Morrisville home. Thank you for considering my intent to serve as mayor. I am here to represent and champion the interests of the entire community, make Morrisville Borough a place we can all be proud to call home. Thank you, and thank you to our residents.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Tom Wazowski?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the opportunity to speak in front of you tonight. Is there anyone here that's an Eagles fan? Show of hands, please. What were you thinking Sunday at halftime? If you're like every other Eagles fan, you were thinking that I can do that job, I can coach that team better than that bum, Sirianni, get him out of there. So let me ask you, what would happen if I was put in to replace Nick Sirianni as the Eagles head coach at halftime on Sunday? Unmitigated disaster, absolutely. But you know that the Eagles would never put in an inexperienced head coach in the middle of a game that was in crisis, right? The issues facing Morrisville right now are way more important than any football game. Public safety and public well-being, a number-one job of any local government. Now, I mean no disrespect to our police officers, and Corporal Smith was a very difficult job. I have nothing but admiration for our police force. They are, they're my heroes, they really are. But our department's in crisis. We're without a head coach. We're without a mayor. We're without a chief of police. We're trying to steer a ship that doesn't have a rudder. We need leadership, we need direction, and we need it right now. So it's important that our new mayor hits the ground running, that he has the experience to show up tomorrow morning and get to work. Now, I agree completely with the idea that new faces are good in borough government. In fact, I didn't run for a third term because I believe in turn limits. I believe in government turnover, and there's a lot of great new faces here interested in being mayor. I think that's wonderful. I think that's wonderful. But now is not the time for that. But here's a question for you. We just had the municipal election, and in the Third Ward, where I live, we only had one person on the ballot, even in the primary. Thank goodness it was a good one, appreciate that. But some of the applicants here tonight are from the Third Ward. Where were, where was the interest then? Where were they? Where was the desire to make positive change then? Why all of a sudden now? For, we all know that if one really wants to make a difference, council is where you need to be, not the job of mayor, because the borough code gives all the power to the council, not the mayor. Now, there are two members of council that were appointed to fill on expired terms. Thank you for stepping up and doing your civic duty. Really do appreciate that. One of the things that you have learned is that it takes a while to learn to be a council person. It's not intuitive, and I will tell you from personal experience that it takes a year to learn to be the mayor because the job is not defined in the Borough to learn to be the mayor because the job is not defined in the borough code.
Three minutes.
Okay. So, million-dollar question. Roll the dice with public safety to train a new mayor, or go with someone with the experience? Thank you very much for your most kind consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Woznowski. Thank you to all of you for your presentations, very inspiring. And I just want to say, before we move on to the action items, I encourage all of you, all seven of you, to stay involved, please stay active. As Mr. Woznowski pointed out, we need a lot more candidates for council. That's really where a lot of the hard work is done. It's embarrassing that we have seats that go vacant with nobody running, or only one person running unopposed, and I encourage all of you to tell your neighbors and friends to please volunteer. We have lots of things going on. Mr. Wallace has already been very active in the short time he's been in town. There's plenty to do around here, and please join a committee, help out, find out what you can do to help. We need all the help we can get around here. We're doing the best we can. We've worked very hard to try to turn the corner, but there's a lot of work left to do. So please stay involved. We really appreciate your commitment. With that, I want to move on to the action items, and I'll call for a motion to appoint an individual to the office of mayor to complete the remainder of the unexpired term, which expires January 5, 2026. And before I ask for that motion, I also want to point out that when former Mayor Brett Anderson submitted his resignation on October 17, which I announced at the last regular public meeting of council, we were not in a position to accept the resignation because it would have started a 30-day clock within which we needed to appoint the new mayor. Knowing that we were going to be trying to do it at this meeting, which was unfortunately 34 days later, we thought we would hold off to officially accept the resignation. By appointing a new mayor tonight, we will effectively be accepting that resignation. I just wanted to make that clear for you legal Beagles out there that are worried about those niceties. In any case, I'll go back to my call for motion. Actually, yeah, the motion's going to be to, well, I guess we're asking for individual nominations? Yeah, okay. From those applicants that have appeared before tonight, I ask the council members to nominate their selection for the next mayor.
Okay, I'll start. The first name is Andrews, so I get to start. I nominate Tom Woznowski.
Are we doing a roll call for nominations?
No, we can open up. If you'd like, we can do a roll call.
No, that's fine. I'll jump in. I'd like to nominate Gary Wallace for mayor.
Okay.
Pardon me, Mr. Paul. May I ask which council member that was?
That was Jason Maness.
Thank you very much.
Which isn't in my voice, it's fair.
Any other nominations? One's going twice. Okay. Nominations are closed. Now, I'm going to ask Virginia for you to do a roll call, and I'll ask each council member to vote for your preference between Mr. Woznowski and Mr. Wallace. And if you don't like the order in which your name comes up, you may pass, and we can come back to you after everybody has an opportunity to vote, just in case anyone doesn't want to be first. Virginia, I'll turn it over to you. Please start the roll call.
Yes. Mr. Lubin.
I get to walk, point on all of these, don't I? Tom Woznowski.
Thank you. Mr. Paul.
Tom Woznowski.
Mrs. Murray.
Gary Wallace.
Mr. Law.
Tom Woznowski.
Mr. Price-Angelhorn.
Gary Wallace.
Mr. Sherlock.
Gary Wallace.
Mr. Robinson.
Tom Woznowski.
Mr. Maness.
Gary Wallace.
Actually, a tie, four for each.
Fair enough. As I had suggested to my fellow council members, we're just going to, we'll do another roll call, and if anybody is on the fence, just consider maybe voting for another candidate. But I would, I think it's very important that we try to select a mayor tonight, so we're going to kind of, we'll just take another crack at it. We have two outstanding candidates. We can't go wrong with either one of them. And I'll just, with that, ask Virginia, please start another roll call.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Lubin.
Mr. Woznowski.
Mr. Paul.
Mr. Woznowski.
Mrs. Murray.
Gary Wallace.
Mr. Law.
Tom Woznowski.
Mr. Price-Angelhorn.
Gary Wallace.
Mr. Sherlock.
Gary Wallace.
Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Woznowski.
And Mr. Maness.
Gary Wallace.
Once again, a tie.
Okay, let's start one more, and I'll lead off the roll call. I'll vote for Gary Wallace. Next.
Give me a second, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Let me make sure I have some history here. All right, and you said Gary Wallace, Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lubin.
Tom Woznowski.
Mrs. Murray.
Gary Wallace.
Mr. Law.
Tom Woznowski.
Mr. Price-Angelhorn.
Gary Wallace.
Mrs. Sherlock.
Gary Wallace.
Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Woznowski.
Mr. Maness.
So, Virginia, is that five to three for Mr. Wallace?
Yes, it is, Mr. Paul.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Wallace, and thank you, Mr. Woznowski, and thank you to all the applicants for coming tonight, for offering your services, and please stay involved. We have also, we have Judge Corinne Chronicle here to swear in the new mayor. So if you would, Judge Chronicle.
She probably brought the Bible. She's sharing.
You got to find out.
You have the sheet, Cam.
I think there's something on the side.
Virginia, would we happen to have the sheet for him to sign?
Is an affidavit of residency also needed?
Yes.
I can definitely look in the system to find one. I know Sue usually prepares those, so I can see if I can get into her. Do some good.
Thank you.
Please, why don't I go for three?
Mr. Paul, should we maybe just move on for a couple?
While we find those materials, let's move on with our action items. Please stand by, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Corinne.
Item 8B. Call for a motion to approve payment to Benjamin Franklin in the amount of $16,579 for a new 80-gallon electric water heater for $3,789, single-handle tub and shower faucet, $2,590, and police department jail cell toilet sink combo, $10,200 in Borough Hall.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8C. Call for a motion to approve payment to TMA Bucks, a transportation management association, in the amount of $1,230 for the 2024 annual dues.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
I have a question.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Robinson.
Catherine, during your Parks and Recreation, you were talking about the pop-up bike lane that's, it comes as no cost to taxpayers?
Exactly.
Then what is this for?
This is membership, our annual membership due to the TMA.
TM, they're the ones that are doing the pop-up bike thing, right?
Yeah, but what else do they do?
They're a very good resource for a number of things if you need to have a...
Pop-up bike lane, you send them $1,000, and you get one?
No, 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 stop, please stop. TMA is Transportation Management Association. They're a very reputable business that works to help all communities with a number of things, has nothing to do with the pop-up, just happens to be the same. I mean, part of it. The public sector membership will cost the municipality what it costs you, that will be 10 cents per resident annually. So for 10 cents, we're a membership, we have been a member of TMA for at least 10 years. They will help you in a number of things regarding transportation. Bicycles, of course, are a new, somewhat of a new phase. They also help with seatbelt inspections, they help with car seat inspections, so whatever, there's a number of things that they do.
What have they done for us in the past?
Whatever we asked them for.
What is that? I don't know.
I think this is a challenge here that I'm really not interested in tackling. If you have been around for a while, and you could see some of the things over the years, they helped us with a traffic study when we were doing the lights at the high school and Grandview School. They're, on where? I'm sorry.
I'm done with.
That I don't know. They have resources that we can, we can attend their seminars, we can, I mean, people haven't been taking, you know, participation, then I can't, you know what? Excuse me. I sound very combative here, but at this point in time, I think we should just call for the vote, and if you don't want to do it, then don't do it. I think the...
I guess for roll call vote.
Okay, roll call.
Can I just have one more question when they do?
We're going to go vote. Talked enough about it, it's $1,000. Roll call, please.
Virginia's looking for some documentation. I'll do the roll call. Please bear with me. Andrew Lubin. Bob Paul. Ellen Ho-Ho. Jason Maness. Nancy Sherlock. Scott Robinson. Carlitha Murray. Catherine Engelhorn Price.
Well, that was close, but...
I apologize, Catherine, I'm winging this motion without a list of names.
That's fine. I do want to mention that they did do a presentation at our last meeting, if you guys remember. So, but yes, thank you.
Motion passes, five yes, three no. I did that correct.
Thank you. Okay, item 8D. Call for a motion to approve the Borough 2024 holiday schedule.
So moved.
Second. You slow down, you just slow down, because I'm going to have to take this. Thank you. So motion was Nancy?
Yes.
And Carlitha?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Thank you. Motion carries. Item 8E. Call for a motion to approve the Borough 2024 meeting schedule.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Do you have, do you have everybody?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, item 8F.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be possible to do both the public library's holiday schedule, meeting schedule, and block?
We'll try. How about a call for a motion to approve the public library's 2024 holiday schedule and 2024 meeting schedule?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, both those motions carry. Item 8H. Call for a motion to approve the 2024 fee schedule.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, Ms. Sherlock.
We ever received that? We never got the fee schedule, did we?
Yes, it was emailed. It was in the drop, but someone said that they couldn't view it properly, so we also emailed it.
When was that?
Sue emailed it.
Couple of days ago, I remember.
It was emailed.
Okay, we saw, anybody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Ms. Sherlock and Ms. Price-Angelhorn, you didn't, neither of you received it?
I don't see it, but I always get all the emails, you know.
I don't think it's on. I don't, I didn't see anything from Sue, but I'm fine with voting for it.
Okay, do we have a majority? I think one way to help is, are there any changes from the current fee schedule? Are there any changes to the 2024 from 2023?
There are. The increases would be the barrier set fees, those would be the increases, which are just your normal increases that you do get every year. We also incorporated some fees regarding if we do get an alarm ordinance in order, we will have that in order. Those funds were, those numbers were provided to us by the police department, so we do have that. And the only other item would be sanitation, which will be discussed at the, at the next budget meeting. So really, it's your typical yearly fee increase, and everything else stays the same. You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, that's one.
Only because I haven't read it.
Okay. Abstentions. Motion carries, seven to one. Item 8I. Call for a motion to approve the advertisement of the 2024 tax ordinance.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, motion carries. We have, that concludes the action items. We have one open committee position, that's on the Environmental Advisory Council, for the remainder of a term that expires on December 22, 2025. We have one... We have one letter of interest. Are we ready to vote on this?
Yes, we are.
We have one letter of interest from Catherine Sicko. I hope that I pronounced that properly, probably didn't. Do we make a motion on this?
Yes.
Nomination.
Would anyone care to nominate Ms. Sicko?
I'll nominate Catherine Sicko to be on the Environmental Advisory Council. Thank you.
Is she yes or no? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Congratulations. And that will take us to other business. Any other business?
Can I just make an announcement? It's not something we need to vote on.
As Judge Cronigl makes her way to the front of the room for the swearing-in, go ahead, Ms. Sherlock.
I just wanted to mention that there were some wood chips that were left over on Saturday. It was a very large pile. It's down, half of them are gone already, but they're still open to the public if they wish to come down and pick them up. The park area near Central Avenue.
Go ahead. It's all yours.
Just for those at home, we have found a Bible here, and we are going to move forward with swearing in the new mayor. Why don't we do it this way? Can everybody hear me? Okay. I say your name.
I, Gary Wallace.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemn, do solemnly swear, swear, sorry.
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend.
...the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
...with fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
I brought all my, rest of my uniforms in the car. I thought we'd be here.
I'd like to just say, we had some really good candidates. I was impressed with a lot of them that ran for mayor. Elections are in two years, so if anybody's interested, council.
Ellen, I was going to say the exact same thing.
Yep.
Okay, gang, as we wrap up, anything from borough officials? I entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, do I need to talk about the appointments? We have two upcoming appointments, I'm sorry, two committee appointments. Environmental Advisory Council has an opening, one three-year appointment that will expire, I know, that is expiring, I guess, next month. So we need to replace that slot, and we also, the Economic Development Corporation has a three-year appointment, a three-year term that expires in March of 2026. So if you're interested in either of those, please send a letter of interest into the borough manager, and we will consider it. Anyway, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll give a motion to adjourn, but I also like to say happy Thanksgiving to all of you, and thank you for coming out tonight and being safe.
Happy Thanksgiving to all of you. Thank you for coming.
Eat too much turkey, I'm not eating turkey.
Is there a second to the motion to adjourn? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned, thank you.